Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 2019 Hingham School Committee Meeting. First on our agenda is a call to order. I'd like to note that this meeting is being recorded and televised by Harbor Media. If anyone else intends to audio or video record this meeting, can you please just let me know? All right, that sounds great. Item two on our agenda, we're going to go a little out of our normal order. Tonight, we have a special guest here from Niasq. We have Cam Staples, who is here from Niasq, to make a very special presentation. So, Mr. Staples, please join us.
Should I go first?
Oh, yes, thank you. Which arm one's better for you?
All right.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I know you have a real busy agenda, so I will keep it brief, at least my portion of it. For those of you who don't know, the New England Association of Schools and Colleges accredits public schools, independent schools, and international schools. So, we're operating in six states of New England and in about eighty countries around the world. So, we have quite a broad reach, and for people that devote their time to us, we are deeply appreciative. We're a volunteer-based organization. We send teams of teachers and administrators to do our visits all across the region and all across the world. But what brings me here tonight is that I get the honor of recognizing Dot Gallo's incredible service to Niasq. In fact, I almost never write down notes, but I was trying to remember all the things that she'd done, and I had to write them down. So, Dot, in her years of service to Niasq, has chaired over twenty-five visiting teams for public schools around New England. That's a tremendous task to chair one. She's chaired more than twenty-five. I don't know the total number, but more than twenty-five. At the same time, she has chaired more than seventeen international visits all over the world on behalf of our organization. She served as the Chair of the Niasq Board in 2004 and 2005, and she was the recipient of the other of our two preeminent Niasq Awards, the Richard Bradley Award several years ago for her service to Niasq. One of the things I remember Dot's service for when I was a member of the International Commission was that she helped write the standards and the protocols for all of our international school visits. So, Dot's reach across Niasq has been tremendous, and in fact, she will be the only person to receive both of our distinguished service awards to recognize the incredible work and devotion that she's given to the organization. So, it gives me great pleasure to award her the Jacob Lutis Leadership Award in recognition of a Niasq volunteer whose leadership performance strengthened the association and whose leadership qualities advanced its goals and objectives, the 2018 winner is Dot Gallo.
All of that work. I mean, that is really an amazing accomplishment. So, we really appreciate you.
That was actually presented back in December, and I was otherwise occupied in December. So, they, you know, decided to come tonight. So, thank you all for coming as well.
Yes, thank you. That is really a great accomplishment. You've done many great things for just this district alone, but to know the reach that you've had across New England and internationally is really amazing. So, very well done. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
All right, now onto the boring stuff. Sorry. So, item number three is approval of minutes. So, we have two sets of minutes to approve. Two school committee meetings held on January 22nd and the meeting held on March 11th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on January 22nd, 2019. I have one note. If on the, at the end of it, where we adjourn to executive session, if you could put the full motion from the agenda on instead of just adjourn to, because we need to state the reason for going into it. But that was from the agenda.
Any other comments or edits? No? All right. All in favor? Are we approving this change? Aye. Great. Approved. Okay, great. Thank you.
And I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on March 11th, 2019.
Second. Thank you, Carrie. Any discussion, questions, edits? Seeing none? All right, all in favor? Aye. Great. Thank you. Great, thank you. How does it do us for minutes?
So, Cam and I have been keeping a great list, and there are some that are still open. Carlos, are you still doing the one from the school committee and capital outlet from January 23rd?
Yes.
Okay. I will diligently work over break and finish up all the minutes, but we're on target.
Okay.
There's just those that I wanted to ask you about.
That's January 23rd, right?
January 23rd, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Oh, and then I'm seeing Carrie and me from March 30th.
Executive session?
Yep.
Okay, great. Great, thank you. All right. Item four on the agenda are questions and comments. The school committee encourages community engagement, and we welcome questions and comments as agenda items are discussed at the meeting. And we've also set aside up to fifteen minutes at the beginning of the meeting for comments or questions that fall under the purview of the school committee that are not on the agenda. Are there any guests here tonight wishing to speak to anything not on tonight's agenda? All right, then we will move on to item five, Dr. Gallo's superintendent's report.
Thank you. We have some updated enrollment figures and... So, you have a copy of the last week's, anyway, kindergarten enrollment, and we have excellent return this year in terms of the number of people who have returned a packet, not just on time, but on time and within the allowance that we give for not paying a penalty fee for a late return. So, the way you read this chart is that in row A and row D, there are the people that have picked up a packet to be completed. People on row A came from the town clerk's office. It comes from a census that she does to verify voter registration and mailing address, and also comes from people simply having moved into town and arriving at the school to pick up a packet. So, there were two-hundred-and-thirty-one students that were in the town clerk's census list, and if you go to row D, the hundred-eight are students that weren't on census. They perhaps have moved here more recently, but there were hundred-and-eight of those. So, the total number of packets that were given out are the sum of the B and the D rows, and that's two-hundred-and-eighty-three students. The total number of packets that have been returned, C and E, are two-hundred-and-sixty-three. So, that means there are only twenty outstanding packets of people who picked them up, which is a very, very good number. And if you look down at the bottom, where there are the starred rows, if you look at the one from G, those are the people that dropped in and picked up a packet, and the ones that have a single star are the ones from C, and they were the census ones, and there are some of each of those returned. As well, at this time of year, we try to do kind of a simple census for students who will be in first grade but will be new to us next year. We've done that last few years, and we find we get more enrollees that way. So, there are a total of six people who picked up packets for grade one for next year, and five of those have returned them. So, that's a smaller number of grade-one students, and that's really what we thought would happen, that as we were able to go to full day and also get a larger enrollment total, then that would bump into upper grades as well, and certainly it has. But six is a much smaller number than it's been the last several years. So, we're happy about that. In fact, if Jane may I have the other enrollment? So, this is the enrollment for April 1. The meeting was on April 1, so we didn't have all of the numbers from the buildings, but we do now. So, nineteen-hundred-and-nine students in the K through grade five at that level. We count the preschool separately. It's on the sheet, but it's on, up near the top of the sheet, because some of those students are students with special needs, and some of them are students whose parents pay tuition for them to be there, so that we have an integrated preschool number of students. So, of those seventy-nine students, there are probably forty-ish that are children who are preschool children with special needs and not EPs, and then the other roughly half of those students are preschool-age, typical children whose parents pay a tuition for that program for them. So, we had quite a big bump up, as you'll remember, back from two months ago, twenty-one additional students in grades K through five, K through twelve, but the bulk of them in K through five. Two-hundred-and-ninety-three students in this year's kindergarten, and we have about two-hundred-and-ninety students that we're anticipating for next year. And not much movement in grades six through eight or grades nine through twelve. Not many students move in and out of those grades, but this number, nineteen-hundred-and-nine, is slightly more than we had last year and slightly more than we had at the beginning of this year at nineteen-hundred-and-two. That's over to the left. Down at the bottom are things that we count only here. The K to twelve in district is the total of the four numbers in the corners here, three numbers in the corners, but four levels. Pre-K count is there, and it is seventy-nine students. And at the end of last year, we had seventy-nine students. That's not just a coincidence. The out-of-district count is forty-seven. Vocational count for this year, to say more students next year, is only five. So, there are forty-three-fifteen in terms of the number of students for whom we have either financial or programmatic or both responsibility for students. And so, that's pretty much what it was last month, only a slight increase from last October, unlike two months ago when we were in a bit of a panic about what does this mean, especially at a time we're looking at a fixed number of staffing so far for next year. So, just before tonight's meeting, I got a correspondence.
Dr. Gallo, I just had a question on the out-of-district number. We emailed, I was, I had an email with you and Suzanne about it, and I was curious about it, because there were some settlement agreements that were recently, a private citizen had requested, and the Special Ed Subcommittee was copied on the redacted settlement agreements, and it looked like there might be three other students that were out of district above that forty-seven number.
There's one student that we call an out-of-district student. It's a shared custody, and so...
So, can we, well, I emailed Suzanne.
Sorry. Earlier today, to see, can we do it, because we're going to have a Special Ed Subcommittee meeting in a couple of, next week or maybe, oh, no, I keep forgetting about, April vacation. You'll be here? Okay. To talk about that in depth at the Special Ed Subcommittee meeting?
Okay. We just spoke in the meeting.
Oh, okay.
So, I just wanted to make sure that the numbers we get were accurate.
Okay, yeah. Okay. All right.
So, that's the number. The forty-seven is the number that we've had most of this year.
Yeah. So, there's forty-seven out-of-district placements that we have placed students at or that grade-placed students at, we're paying attention to, including one additional one that we share with another town. And then there's an additional to a total of fifty-one based on settlements, but those aren't necessarily placements that we have endorsed. They've been unilateral placements, and so that has been worked out in settlement, which is why it wasn't included in the original number, because those are not students that we necessarily follow or oversee until the settlement has expired.
Great. Thank you. That's helpful. I just want to make sure that when we get these numbers, because they are the people that we have financial responsibility for as well, that we spoke about that a little bit, too, and hopefully we can talk about it in the Subcommittee of how to report it, so we get a good number.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Communications? Communications?
Yes. So, Andy Hoy, who is here, brought me information about the National History Day competition that took place over the weekend in Washington, DC, and we were informed that for the fourth year in a row, a Hingham High School student has qualified for the national level. That's an outstanding achievement. There were two students who were honorable mentions, as well as three other students who won prizes at the Mass History Day, but did not go on to the national. And Andy will keep us informed when we get the final packet of information and all of the names. The student who had a first-place paper at History Day, name was Jason, and that's his Greek name, Jason Kamalas. And so, we're proud of him and all of the students who participated. And once again, our kids have done a great job in the History Day competition, both at the state level and the federal, and the federal level. Communications?
Congratulations to those students and to the great history teachers who helped get them there. So, thank you for that. Emma's not here for student communications? All right. Sorry. Oh, okay. Any other communications from anyone? Oh, all right, terrific. All right, so we'll move on to item seven, new business. Seven point one is to hear the music department review.
While that thought is getting that set up, my name is Joanne Bellis. I'm the fifth and sixth-grade band teacher here in Hingham Public Schools, and I'm currently acting as the kindergarten through fifth-grade music resource teacher as well. So, I'm splitting the responsibilities of the administrative work with Phaedra Sisano, who is doing the secondary level kind of administrative responsibilities as well. So, while she's getting that set up, I'm going to introduce the members of my department who are here tonight as well. We have Nene.
Sorry. You might need to go up to the mic, just so people at home. No, that's okay.
Do you want me to, because I thought I was going to...
Yeah, she's going to sit here.
Okay.
Oh, if you can sit, just so the TV people at home can hear.
Sure, sure. Okay, I'll get to the mic, too.
Okay, perfect.
So, the members of our department that we have here today are Christopher Landus, and if you could stand and wave. Christopher runs the...
He's prepared for his big moment.
Christopher runs the middle-school choral program. Phaedra Sisano runs the high-school strings program. Brian Sencata is here. He runs the seventh-through-twelfth-grade band program. Jessica Chung is here. She's from South School, kindergarten through fifth-grade general music. Melissa Tompkins is here from East School, kindergarten through fifth-grade general music. Dr. Joe Young is here from the high school, and he also runs fifth-grade chorus, high school chorus and fifth-grade chorus. Dorothy Turner is here from Plymouth River School. She runs the kindergarten-through-fourth-grade general music program. And Barbara Gorsika is here running the fifth and sixth-grade strings program. And I want to mention Elise Warhoffdig is here as well. She's a member, the co-president, one of the co-presidents of the Hingham Music Parents Association as well. I didn't miss anybody, did I? Good? Okay. All right, so I'm actually going to move over here, just the way the technology setup is, it's a little bit easier to run it from Dot's computer rather than cross all the wires. So, pardon me while I move to the computer here. And I'm going to take you through, every five years, we have a program review of the music department. I'm going to talk about the things that are current, that have stayed the same, the things that have changed, and I'm going to suggest some improvements for the future. So, without further ado, I've organized this presentation into four sections. I'm going to start with an overview of the programs that we currently offer here in Hingham. I'm going to talk about some of the successes and accomplishments that we've seen in the last five years. I'm going to talk about our arts enrollment at the high school and middle school level, and I'm going to conclude with some areas of growth and improvement, suggested growth and improvement. So, for those of you who may not be familiar with our programs, we offer kindergarten through fourth-grade general music, which is kind of an introductory experience to how to sing, how to keep a beat, how to read music notation, world music. We learn songs. We learn repertoire. So, it's a general overview and performing experience that occurs during the school day for forty minutes, once out of every six days of the elementary rotating cycle. After fourth grade, our ensembles transition out of general music into performing ensembles. So, we offer band, strings, and chorus from the fifth-through-twelfth-grade level. It is worth noting that all these programs occurred during the school day, but at the fifth and sixth-grade level, these programs are required. So, students have to pick band, strings, or chorus at the elementary and sixth-grade level, and then, beginning in seventh grade, these become elective options that are offered during the school day. At the middle-school level, we meet every other day for forty minutes, and at the high school level, we meet about an hour every day, except for one drop day out of the seven-day rotating cycle. This allows us some flexibility to run sectionals, so we can pull small groups of kids on certain days, which is very important for our program, that we meet in both large class sizes as well as small. We also offer AP music theory at the high school level, which is college-level work. It's very rigorous, study of how music is composed and constructed and built, and students are assessed with the AP exam at the end of the year. And after school, we run several select ensembles for band, strings, and chorus, and those are typically designed to challenge our higher achievers who need extra enrichment outside the hours of the school day. Those are typically audition-based, and we have multiple groups for each level. So, we have Hingham Middle School Jazz Band, we have Hingham High School Jazz Band, we have chamber singers, we have the middle-school junior choral spectrum, we have symphony, various groups to challenge the needs of all types of learners. We also have Hingham After-School Strings that meets outside the hours of the regular school day, and I think it's worth noting that Hingham After-School Strings is an independent organization that's not actually run by Hingham Public Schools, by the music department, and this was created in response to a program cut. We used to offer third- and fourth-grade strings during the school day, and when that was cut, we felt that third- and fourth-grade strings needed access to strings to be a competitive program, so we moved it to a tuition-based program that is optional for students outside the regular hours of the school day. So, that's a very generic overview. In my written report, there's a lot more information about each of these groups, but out of respect for the lengthy agenda we have today, that's kind of a basic overview. This is kind of what, some examples of what music looks like in Hingham. So, up in the top right corner here, this is our fifth-grade chorus performing at our December concert. We have three concerts per year at the elementary level. This is our hass class with Ms. Turner at Plymouth River School. These are some students from Hingham High School performing at our annual all-town concert, which is a tremendously large, wonderful spectacle, if you've never been, of up to five-hundred students performing together at the same time, grades fifth through twelve, district-wide events, and some examples of what general music might look like at the elementary level. So, at the elementary level, we're learning basic instruments, xylophone, drums, we're learning how to sing in tune, we're learning how to read music, and other various skills. So, some activities that we do, uh-oh, catastrophe. No, no worries. So, some activities that we do kind of outside the realm of what occurs during the school day. We run over thirty concerts per year. When you really break it down, from the kindergarten to twelfth-grade level, there's a whole host of opportunities to see the music program in action throughout the year. So, that takes quite a bit of collaboration, coordination, and communication between our staff members, and I think that's a really impressive feat and something that we do well here in Hingham. We have field trips and tours annually. So, every year, the Hingham Middle School takes a group of students to the Great East Music Festivals, where they're adjudicated based on the quality of their performance. And they, the kids, then we take them to Six Flags for fun, because, you know, music can be fun, too. And we also sometimes, this year, we're going to take them to Canterbury Lake Park. The high school tours annually to major cities, where often they will see professional-quality music performances. Some of the recent destinations include New York City, Chicago, Nashville. We went to Disney World in the last four years, and the chorus also traveled to Italy, which I thought was especially notable, and a significantly impactful musical experience since most of our music comes from the tradition of European countries in history. We attend several regional auditions and festivals per year. I think this is an area of strength for our program. We have music teachers take busloads of kids down to Saturday music festivals, where they audition to be a part of either SEMSBA or districts. And SEMSBA is a kind of more local festival, where kids compete in groups of surrounding towns in the South Shore, and District is a little bit larger regional festival, where if kids are accepted to this festival, they are allowed a day to rehearse with a group of students who are high-achieving from surrounding districts, and then perform a concert with that group of students at the end of the weekend. So, it's kind of a weekend festival, each of these events. Kids who perform especially well at our district honor band are invited to audition at the state level, which I think is notable, and typically every year, we do send a couple of kids to Allstate, and I think that's a really significant accomplishment that we have achieved here. At the Allstate level, kids rehearse at the Seaport District. They go to a big fancy hotel. There's a great conference for music educators, so the teachers who are chaperoning have opportunities for professional development there. And then the students who are invited to perform at the Allstate level perform at Symphony Hall, which is a very, very special occasion and meaningful experience for a lot of our students. We offer mentor programs for our younger members of the community. We have a band buddies program, and the orchestra also runs a mentor program that connects our younger learners with our older learners, and I think that's been significantly impactful in the way that we develop community that is cross-grade level, and I think that's really important. I've seen high schoolers grow so significantly in their teaching and their understanding of music in the way that they've learned to present it to our younger members of our community. So, that's something we definitely have had success with and hope to continue. Some other volunteer and extra things that we've done, the high school band traveled to the South Shore Music Exchange this year, where they got together with Pembroke and Hanover and Situate and a variety of other towns from this area, and each of the school bands performed for each other during the school day as a way and a means of building South Shore band community and connections, again, across the South Shore. Another optional volunteer kind of opportunity that was offered to the fifth-grade chorus was they attended a festival called the Big Sing Festival in Southborough, Massachusetts, and that was a weekend festival that fifth graders volunteered to go do and sing and be adjudicated for, in the spirit of community and collaborations and elementary festivals. So, if you read more on their website about kind of the philosophy, the philosophy is about connecting people, as opposed to really being adjudicated, because it's fifth grade. So, those are some extra things that we do. We try to be involved in the community. So, our high school band performs at the Memorial Day, the Town Memorial Day, and Veterans Day ceremonies frequently. We attend graduation. We perform at graduation. We perform at the National Honor Society ceremony. We have had groups perform at Barnes &amp; Noble, PTO fundraisers. We've had some students in the past take their instruments to nursing homes. So, we try to do what we can to connect with people in our community and make our organizations meaningful, and we try to give kids opportunities to go above and beyond when they are seeking extra resources. So, I think that that's something we do well. We work with community partners as well. So, we work pretty closely with South Shore Conservatory to enrich students beyond what we're able to offer during the school day. Recently, South School had Ed Sorrentino in for a percussion workshop, which was great. He brought some instruments that are not traditionally instruments that we would have in the classroom as like an extra enrichment activity. We work with the Atlantic Symphony Orchestra as well. We have brought in some performing groups, Ezekiel's Wheels, I think it was called, Ezekiel's Wheels, and Ben Soli came to give workshops on music performance and just putting together a program and a presentation that's a different genre of music than we would traditionally hear. Ezekiel's Wheels is a klezmer band, so they kind of taught a different style of music than we would normally be exposed to during the school day. than we would normally be exposed to during the school day. Additionally, we have Recorder Performer come in every year to speak to all of our 3rd grade classes. He brings all the kinds of recorders, soprano recorders, bass recorders. He has a whole presentation that's great, very popular. So these are all kind of things we do outside of the normal school day to help make our music programs rich and full. Some strengths? I think the quality of our personnel is fantastic. If you look around the district, most of us have been here quite a few years, so I think that's a sign of a healthy collaborative community in which we work. Everyone is highly qualified, highly educated. We are hard workers who care passionately about the work that we do. We work evenings, we work weekends, because we feel that this is important, and we feel that kids need to access the arts. So I think that's a real strength of ours. The quality of our performances and experiences are pretty good. So as I mentioned, lots of kids make SEMSBA festival, they compete well at districts, we send kids to Allstate, so I think that's a pretty good indicator of the overall health of our program. We have reasonably good administrative support. So we have a budget for new instruments when we need them, we have a repair budget outside of our regular supply budget. When the HMS facilities were planned, there were art spaces planned in mind, we were included in those conversations and designing the spaces, and I think that's all tremendous. And we have continued collaboration with music staff regarding hiring, so anytime we've needed to hire in the district, music teachers have been involved, and arts leadership has been involved in that process, and we think that's a fantastic aspect of our programs that should continue. We have, again, tremendous student involvement, commitment, and enthusiasm. I think if you talk to students who are in the program, they would have tremendously impactful and meaningful things to say about their experiences in our program. And we have great parental support, as is evidenced by our representative of the Hingham Music Parents Association, who is here tonight. They help fundraise for us to support initiatives that might be outside the scope of what would be in the capital budget or the repair budget, and they generally support with advocacy and talk with us about how they can be helpful in the community. So that's tremendously impactful, important, and those are some of our strengths that we have here in Hingham. So I think many of the things that we do well are on clear display. If you've ever been to a concert, you've seen it. If you've ever talked to a student, you've experienced it. So I'm going to focus a little bit more in the second half on the things that are not so visible, and the things that would really take our program from a good program to being an excellent program, because I think that we still have work to do in that department. So recently, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, or more commonly known as DESI, right, released our report card data for 2018, and this was a moment of celebration for most aspects of our school. Our MCAS scores are very, very high, science, math, English, all tremendously successful. However, I took a closer look at the arts data, because that is my field, I'm very interested in that, and what I saw raised some questions for me, and I don't have all the answers. So I can only report the data as it was reported by DESI, and I do not necessarily have the research to interpret or extrapolate, but I thought the data was interesting and worth sharing. These were 10 towns that were listed as comparison districts on the DESI report card when I went to go look at the MCAS scores. And they provided the number of students who enrolled in at least one arts course currently. So if you notice, Hingham is down here at 35.6%. So we have 35% enrollment in the arts at the high school level, as is currently reported by our district. Now, what does enrollment in the arts mean? I think that's an important question. Does it mean that an arts class is offered once a month? Does that count? Does it mean that an arts class is offered once a week? So I think there's some more information that needs to be sought there about what does it mean to be in an arts class? Is it a high-quality arts class? How often do they meet? You know, is it per term? Is it once a term? Is it every term? Is it all the year? So I think the data doesn't necessarily tell the full picture, and there's more questions to be asked there. However, just looking at the raw data, there's a pretty big gap in what I'm seeing, as far as most districts are above 50%, and we're at 35. So that led me to ask some further questions, and I took a look at some other districts that have been used previously as comparison districts for Hingham as well. So some of these were used in our 2010 report as comparison districts, and I think you'll notice a lot of familiar names, Andover, Belmont, Hall, Milton, Natick, Needham, Wellesley. These are all competitive programs that we want to maybe try to model. And again, we're kind of down here at the bottom at 35%. And again, I think more questions need to be raised before that data is interpreted, but it certainly is raising questions for me about the quality of our programs versus the reach. So I think it's important to have high-quality programs, and we have high-quality arts programs here in performing ensembles that we don't want to take away from by any means, because those are tremendous opportunities for many students. But are there ways that we could be reaching more students with our arts programs? And when I say arts, I don't just mean music. I mean visual arts, theater, that includes dance. We don't really do dance here in Hingham, but it would include dance, as well as music and performing ensembles. So that includes a variety of things. When I looked specifically at the music enrollment data with these towns that were listed as comparison towns, we were more on par with what other districts offer. So we are currently reaching 18.9% of students at the high school level, which, if you look at other districts, they're closer to about 20. That's more standard across the United States, I think, if you look at data from performing ensemble programs, because performing ensemble programs take commitments. You have to take care of an instrument, there's practice, there's time commitment. So I think, in general, performing ensembles tend to go deep in terms of the content that we offer and the quality that we offer, and perhaps not reach as many students. So I would say that's pretty typical of a performing ensemble program. So this led me to ask the question, is this a high school problem, or is this a district problem that we're seeing? So I took a look at the middle school data, and our middle school arts enrollment, we actually start to see a decline as early as 7th grade, which would indicate to me, perhaps there's some systemic reasons that our arts enrollment might be lower than other districts. The blue columns here are our 7th grade numbers, and the red columns are our 8th grade numbers. And by 8th grade, Hingham has 72% enrollment, whereas other comparable districts actually are at above 90 for the most part. So I thought that was pretty significant, and again, questions to be asked about how this data was collected and what the definition of an arts program is, but it certainly made me start to ask questions. So I spoke with my music staff about some ideas that we thought might have impacted enrollment, and these are some things that we brainstormed and came up with, because I feel like we all work very, very hard to do the best that we can to have a thriving arts program here. So challenges with arts scheduling is becoming more and more difficult, I find, every year. There are increased program offerings that make it difficult to schedule around the arts. We have traveling teachers at the high school level. All three of our ensemble teachers are travelers, and at the middle school level, we have travelers as well, running these performing ensembles, which creates limited time slots that we are able to offer our courses. Kids who are taking high-level advanced courses as well, such as Advanced Placement Courses, like AP Chemistry or AP Physics, those are also often only offered one block. So if a child, for example, wanted to take AP Chemistry and AP Physics, and also wanted to take band, and they were both offered at the same block, kids are being asked to make a really difficult choice. And I know that I was one of these children, back when I was in high school, and I opted to not take an AP-level course, because music was something that was so important to me. But I don't know that all kids have such ease with that choice, and I think it's something we could work toward improving. I don't know that we can fix it, because there's obviously a limited amount of hours during the day, and being realistic, all the course offerings that we have at the high school level are important. I don't think that anything is not important. However, could we be more creative with the blocks that are scheduled in very unique spots, and could we try to minimize the amount of conflict there? Additional challenges with arts scheduling. Students who require specialized services are often forced to make really difficult choices. Again, it's, there's only so many hours in the day, and there's only so much we can do. So I am not saying that I have the right solution to this problem, but I do think that students who require specialized service need to be able to access the arts during the day. I think for many kids, that's the one space where they feel successful and confident during the school day, and I think that we are asking families to make some really difficult choices that I wish we did not have to make them make. STEM and directed study are also offered during the arts block elective choices, which I think was with the best of intentions. I think those are both, again, important courses that we offer, but if kids get three elective choices, one of them is a STEM, one of them is a directed study, that's leaving them with one art that's left. And I think families are feeling a lot of pressure with the colleges, the college-level expectations, to make choices that push their kids in the direction of AP courses and STEM and technology, and all of these things are important, they are career readiness skills. So we're not denying the importance of these things. However, when we put them in direct competition with the arts, I think it's important to acknowledge that this will impact our programs ultimately and our enrollment. Time on learning for subject areas. We sustained a cut to recorder time on learning this year. We used to have an extra block for 3rd graders to learn recorder. That is no longer being offered because of increased demands for other curricular subject areas. So something just worth noting, so our recorder program has been absorbed by the general music, grade III curriculum. So little things like these, I think, add up over time, and I think that the general perception of the Hingham music program is that we're great, and I don't disagree with that. We are great. We have lots of wonderful things that we are doing here, but I think it's important to pay attention to the things that we are losing over the years as well. Another loss for us was the high school electives. So we had two general music electives at the high school level, history of rock and keyboarding, that did not run this year due to low enrollment. So those are things that are no longer being offered. I think a lack of non-performing and general music electives is something that we need to look at more carefully. Not all students thrive in a large ensemble learning experience. So there are some kids who struggle with performance anxiety, but who may love music. There are some kids who may love composing, but perhaps not playing the violin. So there's a wealth of other ways that kids can connect with music that we don't really offer here in Hingham. And there's increased pressure of academic and sports commitments. I feel like all of our teachers are feeling that students are more and more stressed out about the time required outside of school with sports. It makes it difficult for them to get to music events that occur in the evening, extra groups that are advanced, and concerts. We have a lot of conflicts with concerts as well. So these are all things to think about. Again, not to say that our Hingham music program is not doing well, because there are many successes and accomplishments that we've achieved, but things to think about that I just think we need to kind of plant the seed there. Now, when I originally saw this, I thought that maybe perhaps the state of Massachusetts music programs is that we just don't have time for this anymore, and that we are, just all high schools have performing ensembles. I thought that perhaps that was a possibility. But when I looked into it a little bit further, what I noticed is that this isn't necessarily the case. Newton North High School, for example, offers leveled, high-quality performing ensembles. So they have two levels, they have an advanced level as well as a, like a lower level to satisfy the needs of different students, and in addition, they offer, I believe it's eight music electives outside of that. One of them being music technology, one of them being film scoring. I think film scoring would be a tremendously popular offering, course offering. So many students are interested in how movie music is made and constructed, and that's a tremendous, challenging kind of way of thinking that combines technology skills, computer skills, as well as music. So that would be a way to maybe tap into some of the computer science learning that we need to do, that would also suit the needs of non-performance music interest. Duxbury High School has, I believe, nine, maybe 10, music electives outside of leveled, high-quality performance ensembles. So they have the leveled, high-quality performance. They also offer audio recording and music business. They have music technology, two different levels, music in movies and television. So I thought those were all notable course offerings that, again, could potentially be popular with the right kind of scheduling and setup. Belmont High School is more similar to our high school in that they have leveled, high-quality performance ensembles, AP music theory, but they also offer guitar and electronic music. I have students asking me daily, "Do we have guitar? Do we have guitar? Do we have guitar?" Ukulele is another popular kind of course offering. Milton High School. Now, Milton High School has un-leveled ensembles, so I think that's worth noting, that they only have one ensemble band, one ensemble of strings, one ensemble of chorus. But they offer honors credit for extra work for these ensembles to help kind of balance the GPA for some of their more academically successful students who are motivated by that. They also offer songwriting and beginner guitar, beginner drumming, lots of courses, again, that are relevant to 21st century kind of arts curriculum. So I'm going to kind of conclude here with opportunities for growth and development. I could offer you a wealth of information about the things that would make our program better. I think any of us could offer you a wealth of information about that. I think the most challenging thing that we are facing as a department is communicating that information in an efficient and an effective way to the right people who can actually help with creative problem-solving, with scheduling, with, you know, talking to other department members about how we can work with their departments and how we can collaborate and communicate. I am a full-time teacher. I teach in five buildings, and I work with 300 students. And I'm here on behalf of my department today as an administrative representative. I can't do justice to this job, do the justice to this job that it deserves. We need a fine and performing arts department head for the purpose of advocacy, for the purpose of communicating our needs. I think a lot of people just don't know what we need. They want to help. Administrators want to help, they want to be supportive. It's not that we're not supportive, it's that we haven't been able to communicate and talk and discuss with the people who need to hear how we can make our programs better. We need program analysis of best practices. So I can look at some data, but it doesn't mean anything unless I go look at other schools and look at what they're doing, look at the things they're working in those schools, look at 21st century arts curriculum in these schools, and analyze and do the research about what's working and what's not, and how can we bring that to our school and create a vision for that? That's kind of outside the scope of what I'm able to offer as a resource teacher. As a resource teacher, I can create access to the budget, I can order supplies, I can schedule things, but providing a unified vision of what our arts programs need to look like in the 21st century is kind of outside the realm of what I'm able to do. Scheduling, again, requires collaboration, because we're all traveling teachers. So any adjustment to the schedule needs to be run through six buildings, including spaces, including schedules, including, you know, adjustments to class size of the year. We have a new building that has been built in the last 10 years, and our schedule has really not changed since the new building was there. We've lost classes over the years, so we used to have available rooms at Plymouth River, for example, that are no longer available, because the school has grown. And our schedule is not adjusting to accommodate these needs, because it's so complicated to get six people together to kind of collaborate and build six building schedules around our needs. Hiring in our staff, supporting our new hires. I think it's important that our new hires who come into the district have a streamlined vision of the curriculum that we offer and the vision of our program that we offer. And professional development, bringing professional development that's arts-specific to our arts programs, to our music programs. And choosing resources, helping our teachers find resources that are good resources, good quality resources. I know that as a new teacher, I read voraciously about anything that would help me do this job better, but I didn't always know the right places to look for those things. And as I'm getting older and have more experience, I have been more successful with that, but I think a department head can help streamline those resources so that we are connecting with information that's useful and valuable. And so, lastly, I just want to shift our focus on our music programs from program maintenance to program growth. I think that we are currently thinking about our music programs as, what can we do to keep them here? And I think rather than thinking about them as, what can we do to keep them here, we need to shift our focus to, what can we do to have excellent music programs here in Hingham? What can we do to have better than average? What can we do to have the best music program in the state? And I think those are the things that are really going to move us forward. So, that's a lot there to think about. You're welcome. So I'll conclude with that, and there's time for questions if anybody has any. Thank you.
Have you ever participated on the Berklee College of Music Just Fest?
No, I'm aware of it, though, yes.
It's a very popular one. I happen to work as a timekeeper.
Oh, yeah.
And I would encourage you to.
Okay, thank you, yeah.
The other thing is, I wanted to know that I'm a strong supporter of actually having Nats director. I have spoken with heads of PTOs before, and obviously, it comes down to money, right?
Sure, of course.
But thank you so much for your presentation and coming here and really making us well of your program and your leadership.
Thank you.
So if there is a way for you to eventually, and I understand you're teaching so many classes there, you may not have the time, but if you can put in maybe three pages, just sort of like, you know, your vision about exactly how we can, you know, go after improving this program. The other thing, too, is have you looked into how other towns work with sports and academics leaders?
A little bit.
To see if they can sort of like bring the kids back to arts?
Yeah, absolutely. I need to do more thorough analysis in that area. Again, this is kind of, I've been doing this job for a year and a half, so I have some work to do with that, but there are kind of stricter policies that towns work with regarding sports. I was looking at Duxbury's program the other day, and they actually have a policy for, like... I was looking at Duxbury's program the other day and they actually have a policy for, like, if a band rehearsal conflicts with a sports game, then you're expected to go to the game. But if there's a band concert and there's a sports game, then you would go to the band concert. So they kind of have outlined a whole bunch of scenarios regarding direct conflicts that the arts and sports are experiencing and come up with a district-wide solution to that. So there are towns that are tackling this issue for sure. It's something I need to look into more, but there, there is information out there.
Thank you.
You have to find it, yeah. Takes time.
And I think, just to highlight one of Joanne's points is, she's a full-time teacher, right? So that's, that's, that's reasonable, but in all your free time, right?
Right, exactly. On my weekend, I can look into that.
The, the, the work that they do relative to their concerts and performances and ensembles, I mean, it is the equivalent of running a multi-level varsity program, right? With full-time teachers at the helm. So, yeah.
Yeah, thank you, yes.
So I, I just want to say that having subbed in all of the schools for six years, I've had the pleasure of subbing in so many of your classes. And I'm completely musically uninclined, but I was able to learn right along with the kids because you guys always had such good instructions and they were always so willing to keep going with whatever they were doing. And I could just sit there and go, "Okay, yeah, yeah, oh, that's good, that's good." And then they, because they, you had gotten them into such good habits and they were so happy doing what they were doing that it was, it was easy for me as a sub and fun too because I could partake in this music program and then see the improvement from kindergarten all the way up through 12th grade, which is just so impressive. And my son has flourished in band doing clarinet under Mr. Cincotta. And I feel as strongly about the influence of it on him that I did about wrestling on my older son. And just so, so happy and proud. And I, I think you make a very good case for the need of a department head.
Thank you.
So, I will, I will keep that on my radar.
Thank you.
Financially, how we would.
No, I understand.
Swing anything at all, ever, but.
I can just advocate for it.
I hear it.
That I care about.
I hear you.
But I know it's a complex machine.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
It's very impressive.
Yeah, fantastic job.
Thank you.
That was great. It was a lot to think about and I love the idea of switching from a maintenance mindset to a growth mindset. And I would also support an arts director too. And just thank you to all the music teachers for all you do. We also have firsthand experience, so it's, it meant a lot to our, my boys and I just really appreciate it, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
I didn't have any questions, I just want to say that was an excellent presentation. I found the numbers very compelling and would like to know more what's behind them and why. I do know, and I'm just going to put it out there, that my son did have a conflict with scheduling and it was orchestra and Chinese. And I know that when kids go from middle school, it's not really the AP classes that are competing, but maybe foreign languages. So, and we're a big family on foreign languages, so he chose orchestra.
Right choice. No, sorry.
But yes, there has to be more behind that and it would be really, I hope that there will be more research done in that area because it is a huge department.
Yes.
And it should be somehow put under one umbrella and makes a lot, a lot of sense. So thank you for your presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, it was really excellent. I would just echo what other folks said. And my two children as well benefited very greatly from the music program, particularly Dr. Young who started my very shy and very performance anxiety student at Plymouth River who is now studying music at the Tisch School. Yes, so a soft spot in my heart for it and Mr. Landis as well. And, but the whole arts and my other son drama major and whatnot, so I have always been a supporter of a department head as well for drama. So if there's anything this committee can do to help get to that important position, please let us know and we will put more work on you and maybe some of the stuff we can sort of research and send some to you as well.
I'll help, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. All right, thank you all. Are you, as folks move out, 7.2 to hear an update on the filing of the foster school SOI to the MSBA. John?
Thank you. So the statement of interest for the SOI, for the foster school, the SOI, the, this is the week that it needs to be completed, it has to be completed by the 12th. It's, it's well underway. Actually, we've had to text the draft out, sent out to the AI3 architect. They actually looked it over. They provided some very excellent comments, I think. And then subsequent to that, I edited some of the texts and I have the text out for review now and with a little luck, we'll get a good copy of this and tomorrow. Thank you very much. So, yeah, no, to get a, get a, you know, different sets of eyes on it. The, I thought AI3 came out with some very excellent remarks about, you know, how the SOI was worded. So this one's worded a little more strongly about some of the deficiencies that are in the building. It references significantly more the master plan that occurred, you know, well over 10 years ago and it's 13 years as relative to its deficiencies. So, but, you know, and then also some edits with the programmatic aspects of the, of the program. You know, one example might be that the, the class sizes looked like they were all between 912 and that's not true. You know, some of them are significantly less, so we, we make mention to, you know, some overcrowding of the programs and of the classrooms. So anyways, the, the next step of that, the, the vote, I, we had a vote for the board's election on February 5th. I have that vote certified and signed. And then the, today, we voted on the minutes from January 22nd when the school committee actually voted to have the school superintendent submit the SOI. Tomorrow, I plan to make the final edits to the texts and the, there's a different elements in the, in the SOI when you submit, there's two pieces that need electronic signatures. One piece is a closed school certification and that had, needs electronic signatures by the board of selectmen, the chair, the chair of the school committee and the superintendent. All three of those are in now, that's been completed. So tomorrow, after these edits come out, another message will go out to the board of selectmen, chair, Paul Healy, to Michelle, you, the chair, and to superintendent to basically sign off on the SOI, which will be the final document with all the edits in it. And with that, when, once those signatures are received, which they were received very quickly fortunately, and I'm sure they will be tomorrow, I'll send an advanced email out. Then I can go in, I'll hit the submit button to the SOI, to the MSBA, so that will be filed. And then we follow up with the certified votes, the, the minutes from the school committee. And also I plan to provide some pictures, some like data about some of the, the significant repairs that have, have occurred. I give them back the presentation from 2017, which I provided the first year, not the second year. So give them a, a good package and we'll get all that delivered. It's got to be there by Friday. I'm a little concerned because Friday's Good Friday, so I'm going to try to get it there Thursday. So that's where we're at, you know, whether that be by overnight mail or hard copy. Typically, I have multiple copies of things so I can make sure that it got there. If it didn't, I can always run it in the next day. So that's what my, what the goal would be. So we're there, this is the final week and my hope would be by Thursday it will be in. If not by Thursday, by Friday it will be carried in and everything will be duly delivered on time.
John, do you have data in there about the, all the times when classes have to be moved?
We have, yes, we've made.
To a different classroom?
There's been significant, significant mention of those, those student relocations within.
Yeah, it's been very frequent.
As well as the, you know, the evacuation, not the evacuation, but the relocation we had to do for the entire day. Makes mention about, you know, the repairs, giving the list of repairs and say each one of those is disruptive to a class where they do have to move. So really trying to, you know, tie it in so, so it reads that, like they can get a better picture of, you know, what's going on with the school.
Okay, great.
So John, some of us are planning on attending the day on a hill on May 1st. As part of that, I have been reaching out to the president of the MSBA, that happens to be the treasurer of the Commonwealth. Since it's a lobbying day, it's sponsored by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, lobbying is allowed, so I do intend to hand deliver a copy of that. So when that is done, with all the signatures, I'd love to have a hard copy so I can hand deliver it to, to her hands.
Sure, yeah, we'll, we can take the, a hard copy, we can actually post it onto the website and, you know, make it available because it is a public document.
Thank you.
Yeah, that would be great.
So just a couple of things, John. Aside from the edits, which are obvious suggestions, there are a couple of notes that kind of refer back to Scott's comments on a couple of things. If it's unclear at all, get me on the phone tomorrow and.
Sure.
Just so we're on the same page with, with a couple of those things. I think his recommendations were really good and I think what you did to rework them is, is really good. I think what's important for the committee to know is, when I was rereading that, I was reminded of, you know what, our class size really isn't that bad there. It's 21 and actually, there's a section where it says, "What's your class size now? 21, about 21." It says, "What's your ideal class size?" Well, it's about 22. So if you just read that, you say, "Oh, well, you're under your ideal class size." That's not the story. The story is the size of the classrooms, the makeup of the classrooms, the location of the classrooms and other spaces, not to mention the mechanicals and other infrastructure issues. But the key to that is the, the classrooms are just undersized by, you know, a few hundred square feet, which is significant when you talk about multiple kids and what we're trying to do with our educational program. And that's the key to stress those physical things that impact the delivery of the educational program, as we've heard from, from the MSBA folks a number of times. With respect to lobbying, I would suggest that you not bring a copy of the SOI. Talk to her by all means, but don't bring a copy because it's just, I don't think that's a useful thing for her, but talk to her for sure. Introduce yourself, talk to her, but I don't know if you need to bring a copy of it, that's just my. Just to point out that, I don't know if you all know, maybe Ed shared with you, I can't remember, but School Building Committee met last week and we shared with the rest of the committee that we kind of had a, a quick, short notice meeting with some folks at the MSBA and, and Patrick O'Connor, our State Center, had arranged it on just a couple days' notice and were able to, to go and meet at the State House with Jack McCarthy, the executive director, and Matt Donovan, the director of operations for the MSBA. Michelle was there, I was there for the building committee, Karen Johnson was there for the selectmen, John was there, and a couple of other members of the MSBA. Joe Moschino was there for a short while but had to run out for another meeting. I thought it was a great opportunity for about an hour to sit down and talk with them, to get in front of them, to really kind of make our case again, but also to, to ask questions and to kind of delve into the process a little bit more. And I think we learned a lot about the process, about their decision-making process, about the application process, what we're up against, the different criteria that they look at and how they look at it.
Sorry, and you might want to speak to it a little bit because I emailed the committee, but they talked about new ways, some new ideas they're having for coming up with additional funding.
Yeah, so there's a couple of things. Well, I would say, one, one thing, before I get to that, is it's, I think it's important that, you know, the committee for, for a number of years and even a number of years going back, we were concerned about submitting an SOI for the PRS windows because we thought that that would be kind of a competing SOI and that they would look at that negatively in the light of, of our foster application. That's not the case at all. We got it right from the MSBA executives that we should submit, it's two different buckets of money as we knew, but they look at it completely different, differently. And as I think some of you know, Braintree has two core projects going at the same time. One's almost finished, the other one's just starting. So it's not unheard of to have two things going, and particularly when they're two different programs, they're not competing at all. So I would encourage this committee by all means to submit an SOI for the PRS windows next February, without a doubt. Michelle, with respect to what you said, they did, Patrick O'Connor did share with us a couple of things that are in the hopper, one of which he sponsors, has sponsored, and one of which is coming from the treasurer's office. His bill is not financial, but it kind of speaks directly to the situation that we find ourselves in, that we've gotten two noes from the MSBA, we're up for a third time. His bill addresses a district that gets a third no. And a third no would automatically propel you into the pipeline with the MSBA to work with them on a project. The second one is financial and that's a bill, the treasurer's office has put forward and I believe they're looking to put the lottery online. And that would include, that would in, do two things. One, it would provide funding for special education, but it would also provide, I think, 140 extra million dollars toward the building cap. There's a, there's a cap, an annual cap of funding for school projects is based on a formula, and this would increase that cap if it goes through the legislature. So that's, that's good news on that front. There are a number of large high school projects that have been working themselves through the pipeline and that's the reason why we've seen the reduction in the number of chosen applicants over the last few years in particular, going from in the twenties on a regular basis down to 15 and then this year 12. That's because these large high schools that are over 200, some are 300 million dollars, have really eaten up a large chunk of, of the annual amount that's available. So, a lot of news. It's, it's good, it's encouraging. I think that meeting with the MSBA was, was, was very encouraging. I think from my perspective, I feel optimistic and I don't always feel optimistic. So I think we have every reason to feel good about our chances this year. Because it's, we're in the two years since they visited us last time, they will be coming back for a site visit, I think, this fall. That's something we can schedule and arrange and we could even get together parents and set up meetings with other constituents to, to discuss with them the issues that are, that are facing them on a regular basis at Foster and what we can all do to help advocate once we're chosen, because I feel confident we will be chosen.
Yep.
So, that's all I have.
Great.
And John, I'll bring it into the city too if you want. We can hook up on Wednesday.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Frey, for your leadership on this and to the building committee and Ed, you as well. So it was good stuff. Josh, did you have?
Josh Ross.
That legislation, is that going through this year? Will this affect us for December or is that just in the future?
Uh, I mean, I think they were trying to get it through as soon as they can.
I don't know the answer to that. I mean, it's, it's, it's just proposed and as you know, legislation can move as quickly or as slowly as legislature deems fit. So I, I think Senator O'Connor will push for his bill in particular, you know, I, I don't know how quickly it could move through. Right, so realistically, there's probably not going to be for us in Foster in December.
No, not by December, I wouldn't think.
Right, yeah. But they're recognizing the need that the projects are getting, are much more expensive and that there is a need to increase the budget. That's been the same since, for six years at least, I think they'd said, six, eight years, that the, you know, the amount of funds available has kept it static while construction costs have increased 30%. So, yeah, so, thank you. All right, anything else on the SOI? Okay, great, thank you. Thank you so much, John, for all your work on that as well. Item 7.3, to receive notification of the appointments of Roberta DeCesar and Elizabeth Grata, food service technician, so welcome to them, and to receive notification of the appointments of paraeducators, Crystal Rich at Hingham Middle School and Melissa Tekanashida at East School, effective back in February, so welcome to them as well. And then some, 7.5, some resignations. Lauren Turaco, adjustment counselor at South School, Elena Berry, a paraeducator at the middle school, and Kathleen Olding, paraeducator at Hingham High School this month. So, thank you to them for their hard work on behalf of the district. Item- Um, item eight is any 48-hour items? And, oh, Jamie, yes.
I have something that I want to apologize because we should have mentioned it a little bit earlier, but-
Oh, yeah.
I just wanted to make the committee aware and, and we've shared this information with the community, so if you see any flyers or information kicking around. Uh, but we did schedule, um, two parent sessions, um, to sort of give to our parents and community members an overview of the new social emotional learning program toolbox. Uh, and those are scheduled for May 1st and 2nd. On May 1st, it'll be held at, from 7:00 to 8:00 PM, um, at the Hingham Middle School Distance Learning Theater. And then on Thursday, May 2nd, it'll be at 9:00 AM at the Distance Learning Theater at the middle school. And we will have, uh, we've received several inquiries from people, um, asking about the lanyards and whether they can use them at home. And so we will have, uh, lanyards for sale. Uh, I think they're 14 dollars or 13 dollars. Um, so whatever we pay for them is what we're asking. There's no money being made off of the sale of the toolbox lanyards. I assure you. Uh, so, but they will be available as people have been asking. So, um, we are incredibly excited to share, uh, our program with the community. And also, there'll be more to come on this other piece, but we were, uh, we received unofficial notification that um, we had submitted a presentation to the Mass Association of School Superintendents Summer Institute about our social emotional learning program, the research that went into developing it and then the implementation and rollout, uh, and we have been selected for presentation. So-
Ah, congratulations.
We'll be bringing a team, um, to the institute, uh, to do the presentation. So there'll be more information coming. Uh, we actually submitted two, one on computer science and one on, uh, social emotional computer science. Um, they get a lot of positive feedback for it, but asked, actually asked us to reapply for both the-
Oh, great.
-Mass-Mass joint for parents and member, as well, to talk about the community engagements and sort of the role that HEP played in engaging that work, um, as well as the Masque Conference, which is the Massachusetts Computer Using Educators. So-
Oh, excellent.
I should have mentioned this earlier during the substance report, but, um, it just escaped our members. So it's not really that 48 hours, but-
Yeah.
We thought it was good news we're sharing, uh, that the work that we're doing is being recognized.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you very much. Thank you. Yeah, that's excellent. Good job. Um, thank you. Um, all right, Subcommittee and Project Reports. I will start with Kay. Community Outreach, anything?
Nothing to report?
No? Have you guys got the FAQs up?
They are up on the website. Um, and we also did post it to Facebook, so.
Awesome. Great, thank you. Thank you very much. Um, and policy, nothing?
Nothing to report at as well.
All right. Um, Carlos, Long Range Planning?
Um, we have a meeting after the last one.
Okay.
Can I just mention this?
Oh, please.
Um, so I did just receive a copy of the grant agreement from the Community Preservation Committee for the $24,445 to, going towards the PRS playground upgrade to ADA compliance. And, um, the paperwork that goes with it is laid out as far as what we have to do from, to get them, actually get the money. So, um, I'll be happy to help make that happen.
Vote yes at town meeting on CPC grants.
Oh, right, yeah. So vote at town meeting and vote yes for the CPC grants.
All right, thank you. Um, Special Ed Subcommittee, I, we will schedule a meeting very shortly. Um, Suzanne and I will come up with some dates and I'll send them to, to figure out what works for you both. Um, Salary and Negotiations?
Um, I'm meeting with Dot tomorrow to discuss what we had discussed at our last executive session meeting. So then I will be able to, then we'll probably regroup with the Subcommittee and then report back to the full committee.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, any Liaison Reports? I'll start at the end there. Carrie?
Yeah, um, so East met last week. Um, we've discussed enrollment. Um, it's actually been inching up in their building. Um, there's still, there's still plenty of room, but it's inching up. And they said they're likely gonna need a fourth kindergarten section um this year, the way things are looking. Um, they had focus groups for parents, um, one in the morning, one in the evening, and there's a great, it was great feedback about and questions about the different programs at East. Um, and they're gonna be doing one for the kids coming up, too, which should be good. Um, they are going to do a social, it's kind of joint with the school council and the PTO, and they'll have a TED Talk. Um, the two topics that were discussed were either, um, the benefits of letting kids fail at things and anxiety. So it'd be one, what they do is they put the TED Talk out, everyone watches it and then they get to come together and discuss it. So they're trying to finalize that, but that, that'll be coming up. Um, they have a survey going out to parents and are working on a mission statement, um, right now, because the, the school is now 10 years old, so they've tried to revisit that. So the school council came up with one and then they gave it to the PTO for feedback, so they're waiting to hear back. Um, and then we discussed, um, talking, thinking about the school improvement plan for next year and goals. So Tony was gonna start thinking about some things and he asked the members of the school council to, um, consider some ideas, too, just kind of the broader things.
Okay, great.
It's a good meeting.
Excellent. Oh, thank you. Libby?
Uh, just that the HEP fundraiser was a huge success. They were sold out and I heard lots of fun things about it. So, but more kudos to HEP every time.
What did I say? Hingham- Hingham Education Foundation. Right. HEP.
Don't say HEP.
HEP, no. Hingham Education Foundation. Thank you. Um, Carlos, any Liaison Reports?
I attended, uh, the Hingham High School Council Meeting. Uh, one of the things that they are doing is planning a trip to Plymouth Schools to see the solar panels there and how they install them.
Okay.
I also attend the next day, I believe it was the next, the next day, the Hingham High School PTO meeting, um, to present our budgets and let them know that we are experiencing shortfall. Um, one thing that I did learn is that they are in the process of, uh, applying for a 501(c)(3) status. I believe, I believe they are the only school that doesn't have the 501(c)(3) status, so.
No, no.
The school doesn't have these?
Yes, correct. Okay, thank you. Um, Ed, do you have anything?
Well, the, attended the PRS Council Meeting today.
Mm-huh.
And again, would, uh, mention that Plymouth River, it will be celebrating its 50th anniversary this fall. And the administration, uh, has happily received some, uh, answered the request for some posters, paperwork or feedback from alumni and, alumni and, and parents. So keep those cards and letters coming to the, uh, for the celebration. Um, the Building Committee, uh, met on the, uh, last week on Wednesday and I would refer you to Ray's excellent report. Could not do that any better. Um, I brought my warrant in tonight, just as a quick reminder, because we will have one more, we will have one more school committee meeting, but it'll be on the night of town meeting.
Yes.
And I guess I would ask, on behalf of the full committee, uh, to the TV audience to ask, thank you and ask for your continued support. Article 6 is this, is among other budgets, the school department budget. And then we have three articles on day two, second day. Article 24 for the $350,000 extraordinary maintenance at Foster. Article 25, uh, the money, $550,160 for the windows at the high school gym. And Article 26, uh, to authorize John to sign a five-year lease for buses. So we would ask and hope for your continued support.
Thank you very much. Took the words right out of my mouth. Thank you. Um, Kay, do you have any Liaison Things?
No.
Okay, great. Liza?
Um, I would just add that I went to the Foster School Talent Show, the third annual, and it was excellent. So next year, if anyone is interested in seeing five, five-year-olds to 11-year-olds perform, I highly recommend it. I was pleasantly surprised and they, uh, the kids were great in the audience, too, supporting their fellow students and everyone. It was a full house, too, at the high school. It was really nice Saturday afternoon.
That's great. That's great. Thank you. Um, just quickly before we adjourn, as Ed mentioned, our next meeting is April 22nd, um, at 6:30 at the LMC at the high school, just prior to school meeting, or, I'm sorry, town meeting. So this is actually our last tel- full televised school committee meeting for the 2018, 2019 year of official committees. Um, so, just a very quick note, um, to some of our fellow committee members, um, these flowers are not just here for decorative purposes. I wanted to just give a little, on behalf of the committee and the administration, a thank you to Liza and to Kay and to Carlos for your service over the last few years. Um, Kay, you are not returning, you are not running for reelection, so thank you very much for everything you've done, particularly this year. We've had a lot more minutes than, a lot more meetings than we ordinarily would have, so not realizing that when Kay stepped up to become Secretary last year. So you've really taken on a lion's share of the work this year, so appreciate that very, very much. Really do. We will, we'll miss you on our committee. And Carlos, thank you so much for all your work with Long Range Planning this year and everything else you have done over the last, um, term that you've been sitting here. We really appreciate it. And Liza, you as well, thank you. Um, I literally would have been lost up here without you sitting next to me. Remind me of those Robert's rules every once in a while. So thank you for everything you've done. So appreciate everything you've done and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank everyone.
Yeah. You're welcome. All right, well, with that, I will take a motion for adjourn.
I'll take a motion.
You will make a motion. Yes, you may. Can I get a second? Thank you.
Kay second.
Take a second, yeah. This one, this one time, you can. All right, all in favor? Aye, thank you. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.